A special meeting to order. We have the agenda before us. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance in our regular meeting, and I'm going to turn it over to Rob.
Okay, thanks for coming. We'll run us through these as efficiently as we can. I know John asked me to make a regular update from here forward on the regular agenda, so this is going to be the last time just to catch all up. Having said that, as you see, there are some things you guys are going to have to consider tonight, and other things you can just chew on and come back to us with as you have time. So the first one is parking. I think we know that we're working on alternative parking scenarios that will be beneficial for the amphitheater, the plaza, et cetera. I would call this ongoing, I think, based on need availability and fit, so we'll leave that at that. There's no further questions. I did put risers in there. These are in no particular order, by the way. We're just, we were trying to adjust on the list to make sure anything that we had talked about, we can bring up to you. It was suggested that we consider a couple sets of drum risers for the stage as a part of the performances. It's pretty standard from what we're being told. They can be made for as cheaply as twenty-five-hundred per riser locally, which beats the retail price or going out to a specific vendor for them. Our programming gentleman, Bill Grady, has access to this person, the ability to turn those around. If that's something that we would want to move forward with down the road, that is not something we needed a decision on tonight.
But barely so.
What type of material?
Casters. I forget what he said the type of material was.
Steel, wood, black. Might be a combination of steel and wood, I guess.
So, we do plan on engaging volunteers, anywhere from NHS or Busa Clubs or Fine Arts too, potentially even if Rotary would be available to do some things. As we, as we get a little closer and have an understanding of what the need is, we'll be reaching out to those folks as we move forward. I wanted to give you just a quick update on programming. He is working through negotiations for Michael Evans, who is a Michael Bublai tribute artist, for the Hark launch, the initial launch on August tenth. If for some reason that would not work out to be advantageous to the township, he's willing to pivot to Michael Cavanagh, who's a northeast Ohio native, who does a Billy Joel, Elton John tribute set. So of the same, of the same type of music, both are really good options. So as we get a little closer with what that contract is and what it looks like, he'll circle back, and obviously we'll give you updates as we do.
Is that something we're expecting, working through sponsorship on those, or is that something?
That is a part of the.
Is any of this township going to help to kick it, kick it off?
I think he is planning, and we'll get into that when we go over the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, but to hint your question from a general standpoint, his plan is to have the shows covered by sponsorship. Okay? I'll dive deeper into that as we get into the programming piece of it. The other one is, we had to do some finagling, and we are moving away from the Stark Park Summer Serenade because there was a gap in their funding with their grant, to be able to cover the total cost of what the symphony would, to now doing the Shootouts, which is the Ryan Humbert Band, who's very locally local.
Actually, pretty big. He used to play on the Grand Ole Opry.
Oh, so Ryan's.
Yeah, they're big. I'm just saying, he's a local, and he's a, he's a, he's a local native. Very big. Cost, actually, considering how big he is, would be about a federal level of costs to bring the symphony in.
Just as a side note, I'm going to five seats for you and Jenna that evening, because I know it's your favorite genre. He plays country music, so you got to work out.
No, we're, we're pivoting away from that soon. Having said, no, I'm kidding. I'm very excited. Ryan's a good guy. We already play different genres. He's, he's as good as it gets, and he's really starting to blow up, so it'd be fun to have him. He may even do the sound check for us, the soft opening on the third, and bring like five-piece group with him so we can test the mics and the settings and all those things that I don't understand anything about when it comes to audiovisual work. So we're, we're working through some of those things. I know that he's working to book like an Alpha Ray, which is a children's animal programming, working with North Antalide, doing some yoga in the park for the, for the fall, just to get us a soft launch, get people familiar with what we're looking to do in this park for full schedule in twenty-twenty. Again, as things come to fruition, we'll update you as a part of the normal updates we have forward. Budget. So the budget is, and I, and I had these as a part of the resolution, so you can kind of view them and go through them and understand what they are, moving forward for twenty-three and potentially twenty-four, so we'll hit those resolutions. But ultimately, what he's hoping to do, Scott, since you mentioned it, is for twenty-twenty-three, have the shows covered in totality as far as the cost of the talent and the sound tech, and if there's any ancillary needs, like he mentioned temporary lighting for certain shows that you could bring in, you wouldn't have to pay for it because not all shows require those and things of that nature. If I'm missing anything, guys, let me know. Just, just some of the ancillary needs. I can't remember everything off the top of my head.
I didn't think it was going to be a hundred percent covered.
No, he's looking to have it covered.
But you look at the expenses and income piece, and it says expenses seventy-five-hundred, income five thousand. I mean, that's a.
And he's, and he said that. He said there, there's always a forecast being lower than what his goal would be.
Well, I think he's always keeping out, John, am I wrong? Is he always keeping out the sound piece? That, the sound tech that we, he'd like to get sponsored, but that would essentially be on us? I think that's what that point five hundred is.
No? I, I think how that does, if, if somebody steps up and says, I want to sponsor the Goo Goo Dolls.
They'd be.
You know, he basically said, okay, here's what it's going to cost you, da, 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 sound guy this, and then on and on and on, and that whole tab would be in that sponsorship. That's, that's the way I understand it.
That's the way I understood it too, is he breaks it out line by line. He gives you a general forecast of if the worst-case scenario happens, and then what, what he hopes to cover anyway.
Now, he may do that just as a matter of doing all that in his head to a point where he says, okay, I know I'm getting these guys for a thousand bucks. Sound guy's going to be five hundred. I gotta, I gotta have some food for them. I better do that. Okay, it's going to cost you three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So he included every expense, including what the band was going to get as a part of that production. Is that?
That is correct. Travel included.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, whatever the expenses were.
That is correct. So having said all that, and the budget for twenty-two-four, we'll go over in more detail. I know John, Lisa, and I have had some conversation about it, so there's going to be some sticker shock. We had some, we had some ideas I think we want to go over before we would, we would even.
Well, there's sticker shock if there's no sponsorships.
I understand.
Yeah.
But my point being, I think some of that initial number even could drop too. But we'll get into that when we get into the specific agenda items. I'm just literally going over the updates to highlight some of the things that we're doing. Some of these are their own agenda items, so I won't spend a lot of the time right now simply because I know we're coming back to them as a part of the agenda in formal fashion. The website, as you can see, it's up on the wall. We're going to go through it when it comes time for the resolution for its contents. What he's basically thinking is, as you see now, there's the, there's the rendering, which we will see in the virtual tour at some point or another. What he'd like to do, I know that some of Chief's folks are working on some photography, put a kind of a time-lapse video together to show the progress in the construction of the amphitheater and kind of show what it is. Obviously, the homepage would be populated with our information and things of that nature. You can see there would be a way to connect with, with email updates and newsletter updates moving forward. At the bottom there, you can subscribe at your own discretion. The calendar would populate with the types of events, and this is simply a lockup. Again, nothing's confirmed yet, but just to give you an idea kind of what the event would be for that day, a general synopsis. In the event of the concert, for example, what he's hoping to do, once we have concerts locked in, is provide clips via YouTube channel or something like that, that somebody can actually click on and get a taste of what type of performance that would be, so that they can have a fairly, fairly knowledgeable idea of what they would be coming to do and see and so on and so forth. Again, this is a lockup. This is not live yet. It's just to discuss kind of what the layout would be. You can see the list, the month, the day here. None of these are overly populated yet. They're just trying to get the bones and the stuff up, so as we move forward and start logging stuff in, you guys have an idea if this is something you like, if it's not something you like, if it's something you want to go with, if you understand that the general contents are okay. I'm going to go back just so that we can show you the different things. We'll have things in here about the venue, what it is. Obviously, you'll see a calendar event. The other button he's looking to add into some of this is frequently asked questions about the venue. Like, be prepared. Parking, parking onsite might be tough, but here's some ancillary options for you. To, for example, if you went to Blossom or something, and they said, we don't allow anything but clear bags in, or whatever those cases may be, those types of particulars as we get, as we delve down. You know, our procedures and policies that we passed a couple of weeks ago will be up there. And then the info button, if you can see there, I'm highlighting, he'd like that to be kind of what's over at the square, sponsors with the square, kind of cross-promoting the vendors with their logo and a link to their, whatever, it could be in social media or whatever. And then from theirs back to this site. So it's kind of a one-stop shop. No matter where you go, you can get an idea of the venue, the surrounding area, again, the parking, et cetera. And then if you've got questions, your, your, obviously, your contact button. Generally speaking, now, this can add, delete, subtract, tweak as we go. It's obviously a living, breathing organism to a certain extent, but the general format is to be sleek, simple, a couple clicks, and keep people moving so that they keep their interest up and, and stay, stay connected with what we're doing. So, again, we can go over some specifics as we get into the agenda item with the specific resolution. If there's something you want to do, if you want to adopt, not adopt, adopt with certain changes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we just want to show you. The logo on here, again, is just to mock it up. We have black and white logos to go over here in a little bit. It was just simply to get something on the page to mock up, so you can see generally how, how the, what page would flow. The other thing he's talking is the banner on the bottom, having the Township Black and White Sunburst, just so that every time they, they click on a page, they understand that this is a township-operated venue, this is a township-operated facility, and it's rated accordingly. Okay? I won't, again, we'll, we'll continue to circle back to that stuff. We talked the idea about Nixle with weather notifications, promoting it on the website, and just give alert info of weather delay, cancellation, date to be made up, et cetera, et cetera. We can push out in real time and get to people, notwithstanding, I know the flag system Chief's coming up with and things of that nature, to, to alert of incoming weather, severe weather, go to your cars, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Rain dates, what he's looking at to do now, again, Nixle on the website, but he's looking to post a rain date, if we at all can, the following evening or two evenings, to, to capitalize momentum with the original date, keep the stock that the restaurants would have ordered to accommodate for these types of large events, allow them to mobilize their staffing in a way that keeps them engaged as well, as well as keep us and the people that will come over to the venue kind of on, on the same general target, and it's not the bullseye of the date based on weather. So he's working those out with some of the contract negotiators for some of the events as he goes through. We have a safety team meeting scheduled for June sixth with all department heads, representation from the, from the sheriff's office, and the team to kind of understand logistics, operations, safety protocols, the emergency action plan, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We'll be following up after that initial meeting with, with subsequent meetings to make sure that we've done the run-throughs ahead of the events. So we, we are thinking of that. That was a suggestion Chief came to us with a couple of months ago, and, and when we met with Bill, what, John, two, three weeks ago, we, we had kind of set the date, and, and once we were confirmed, we started back with the department heads, and everybody's always having back saying that they're, they're certainly available and willing, so that's a good thing for us. The sponsorship pitch deck, we just got this, this, after late, late yesterday, early this morning, I printed it out. This is a template. Again, he'll be continuing to add to this and tweak this and add specificity to it, but generally speaking, he'd like to put a slide deck together that we can, A, populate the website with, B, put into hands of virtually everybody in the township, so that if anybody comes up with any information, or calls in, or calls you, or, or stops you in the street, or you think of anybody, we all have the ability to forward sponsorship deck forward and continue to engage people to, to help put that up.
I mean, I take there's some type of limitations language that'll be supporting this.
In regards to, I, I'm just, I'm not interested in the questions.
The local AKK chapter said.
Oh, yes, I think we put that in some of our.
All of that stopped too.
Policies and procedures too.
All of a sudden, there's a new adult-oriented, like township business that chooses to.
Right.
Like.
And I think we even put some of that language in those policies, procedures, and protocols that we passed already to stick to that, yeah.
And I think this is where he sits down with people too.
But when it, when this goes, does somebody?
Have it accomplished.
No, hey, it doesn't say anywhere here, well, we actually got this other.
Yeah. So if we forward those with.
Yeah. Please see policies and procedures for additional applicable details.
Or we'll have more.
Just a reference.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's an easy do.
So let me just throw something real quick. So when you start looking at what these sponsorships offer, as you look at some of these bullet points, those are the things that we're taking into consideration, because if we're going to offer up four front-of-stage passes, two VIP parking passes, obviously, we got to have logistics for that. So whatever that is, whether it's seating, or, you know, somebody out here reading this, whatever method we come up with to show that they have that VIP parking.
We could, we could create passes that we give out, and we will need somebody in the lot.
But those are all issues that.
It is logistic.
Yeah. Okay, Rob.
No, we're good with that. We want to, just construction, we, we've again met today. There is a delay in, in receiving some of those tension rods to put the, the roof up and, and things of that nature that.
They think it'll be done in about three weeks.
That's, the, the latest we got is about four o'clock this afternoon.
It does have a schedule.
Close.
Yeah, it makes it close, but.
Is Pat still willing to get on a plane and go get the stuff if he has to? That's what he's, that's what he said before.
Well, they, I, I don't know if they got snookered. I, I don't know what really happened, but the people here in the United States told them that they could get it faster if they got it from this other company that was coming from England. So they said, all right, let's do that, and he still hasn't been able to get it.
As of four o'clock today, though, he thought he would meet the June twenty-first deadline.
Yeah.
But our architect is, is asking for weekly breakdowns now to see how close we are to target, because again, after the twenty-first, there can be liquidating damages.
The steel basically is what's holding up the project right now. Because they're to the point where they can only do so many things around that.
Yeah.
But we did get in a note where they thought they haven't done in three weeks.
Okay, it came from Justin, of course. Yes. So logos, well, again, there's four in here to look at, potentially make a decision on with, with an agenda item. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. We did get them to design some stuff. We've talked on and off about apparel. I know when we met not this, today, a week ago, there, there was talk about them being able to come out with a really nice professional design, and then what's the board of who said design? I can get it up to a lead at a really nice rate and price and turnaround time for the apparel. They've always been very good, used us as a priority, both with departments as well as the programming orders and, and what we would need. I know that they would turn it around quick enough for us. But just as those things start moving forward, and we start bringing those to you, you know, that's a consideration, so that everybody back here working that night understands, obviously, Chief in the fire department stands out with what they wear, and the guys up under traffic understand what they wear, the general folks inside the facility will be wearing the same shirts, clearly marked, and, and be able to get people to where they need to go, or at least assist them from the start. Door software, AKA the Green Room back here. We just did this at Diamond. It's working out fantastically. I can't tell you. It is a hardware. They use it to start county office building. You can program temporary codes in. There are master codes you can program in. What they're eventually going to do, once the amphitheater's up and they've programmed the restrooms and the back doors and here, anybody here with their key fob or their ID card, or, you know, what they use to access this building, can access the store. The good news is, nobody that doesn't already have access will have access. But you don't need the same person onsite twenty-four seven to get somebody where they need to go to and from. And if there was something that came up, an emergency tornado blew through, somebody close could get them into a building safely, whatever the case may be. But it is, we've used it. Lauren and I have trained on it. It is as easy as a day as long to program the door accordingly for an event or an evening. It does lock every time you leave, so you're just simply typing the code in every time you go. So there's no unfettered access to the building at any time. Okay? So I wanted to be clear about that. You pass those resolutions. I wanted you to know the hardware is in. The software is actually in and working great at Diamond. The same software will be installed here, and from the same computer app web access, anybody trained on the system can access it to get it done. So it'll just be essentially added to a menu that we already have. Okay? Calendar update, like I told you guys before, some of these may be, they may be a little redundant, so I'm not going to worry with it. The calendar update is, they're looking to do a couple of shows in August, something in September, and I know that Royal Docs is, is talking very heavily about hosting their, their Doctoberfest and paying for the talents and the performances back here and things of that nation, the things that come with it. A soft launch, we talked about some of the day programming for a soft launch, so people get the idea of where we're at, what we're doing. Of course, Winter Fest, et cetera, et cetera, and then launch into a full calendar in twenty-twenty-four. The calendar, as we get to the agenda, I want to go over now, just so you're thinking about it. He proposed a weekly series. I know when I talked to John and Lisa individually, I think the consensus is, we felt more comfortable about a bi-weekly series or a twice-a-month concert series. A, it keeps the cost in check, but it also gives us a chance to kind of walk before we run, see how we do with sponsorships, see how we do with execution, work out the kinks in a way that we can manage both the expectation of the customer and ourselves accordingly, and then grow as we grow. That's the thought process that we'll be looking over. So again, you'll see probably a full calendar that was proposed. If, if you chose to go with a bimonthly thought pro, or a bi, yeah, twice-a-month thought process, we can adjust that and say pass with the thought of a concert series being twice a month as opposed to.
Yeah, because unlike other facilities, we're starting with just a couple months, which I like. I like that, that we don't, and then, you know, I think we just, we got to ease into it before we're thrown into it, to see what works, where we need help, get our feet wet.
The thought was, doing everything we do to the best of our ability without trying to just MacGyver everything together to get it in.
Yeah. I like bimonthly, twice a month.
I, I'm a big fan of that.
I don't care if it's first and third, second and fourth, first, I mean, however the board wants to, I think it just should be, keep a pattern. If it's a first and fourth Thursday, or second and third, just so people know.
What to expect.
But I, I think that works better for us.
Yeah, so, you know, we can look at those, and, and the idea would be to, just to, they landed on Thursdays as a concert day. It works with Plaza. I know Grant's set in on a couple of these meetings. It fits into a whole and scheduling at other places. It allows us to kind of create our own identity with this concert, what it's going to be and why it's going to be, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and promote it accordingly. We, we kind of landed on Thursdays because we found a sweet spot that it's not as heavily promoted in other areas. And, and when you're talking about getting artists and talent in to perform those, based on radius requirements and, and routing requirements, you tend to get them at a more discounted rate because they're going to be playing a show on a Friday or a Saturday. The radius rate that, that he's putting in contract is they can't play within, I think it's a hundred and forty-five miles of the venue for a certain amount of time before or after that, so that it's, it's kind of an exclusive to our venue. And the routing is such that he's trying to route them either in between dates or on their way to dates, so it's a little cheaper for us. They've got dates they're booking. It gives them a chance to play, so, and, and it allows us the opportunity to book really high-end talent for not as high-end cost.
That's awesome. That's fantastic.
Did I miss anything that guys that.
Yeah. I love that he looks at that angle.
The chair.
The question will be, though, it sounds good. On the front end, you can monitor it. On the back end, who's going to enfor, who's going to enforce it? Because policy is only worth as much as.
I don't know if the contractor forces it, but who finds that out? You know what I mean? If somebody's a hundred and forty-eight miles away, yeah, we're not going to know. I don't know.
Yeah.
Do you know, John?
No, but it's like he says, it's, you're probably, it's highly unlikely that within that range, anybody's going to draw from somebody else.
Oh, yeah, I get that, but I'm just saying, typical policies out there, it gives us warm feel-good, but really, it's, it's a false pretense af, after the fact, so. Go ahead. I just.
So we are at the chair, drummers and chairs for VIP sponsors. Obviously, we have some here, but if, if we get the sponsorship he's looking at, we're looking at potentially a hundred fifty, two hundred chairs at some point. We may, we may want to look at purchasing those with the idea that if we get the sponsorships, or as we get, would be a better way to put that, you're essentially, they're paying for those chairs.
Right. They can buy a package where they want front seat at every concert, and it comes out to whatever. So I'm sure we'll have, we will have to get those chairs.
Would we look, would we look branding those chairs? Because Lord only knows outside how that stuff could.
I'm sure we could.
That's a good idea.
That's kind of one of the things that we talked about logistically. I mean, we got to get them. We got to store them. We got to figure out how they're going to be secured. I mean, all that will go into when we start looking at, okay, how many do we need? And, you know, if all these sponsorships start flooding in.
Yeah.
And at a certain point, just because, hey, you could get three hundred chairs this way, you, you still want to keep the number tight because it creates exclusivity, which if.
That's what he said.
If nothing else, it's going to drive the value up. Okay, hey, you want one of these seats? It's forty bucks instead of twenty-five.
And they're seats like this.
And that's not, that's not prohibiting anybody from coming. You can sit.
But don't you think on the back of these types of seats, you give it a sticker?
Well, I was just going to say that there's, there's a sticker we use for the, even the floors at Diamond during the pandemic that don't wear off with the wear and tear. You actually have to physically use a certain type of.
Those exact seats, but you know what I mean?
You know, wash to get them off. But that's, that's the type of sticker you have. They're on those types of materials that will hold up to even weather. So, yeah, those are easily done. I think it's a matter of putting stickers on and keep moving. So, and I have it marked down to, to look into what the cost would, basically, a hundred fifty badge stickers would be, you know, about eight inches, twelve inches in diameter, so you can see it.
Like in the golf terms, like Augusta, they, it's a bowling chair.
Yeah.
I mean, not bowling, like a lawn chair, and it actually says Augusta National, and you have to use that chair, because that's why they all match.
Yeah.
But that might be easier to store than our chair. I don't know if they're adjustable though.
Yeah, if they fold, then you'd have to be less space. Yeah.
I'm not sure. I don't.
It's not like they're sitting in there for eight hours.
Or that they're going to sit there the whole time.
Better be a bimber.
So we can look for different options to make that feasible too. Green Room Catering. I know we're going to be aggressive with Plaza's sponsorships to cater the, the talent in the Green Room. I think they'll see the ROI in, in real form in an immediate sense. I think that's pretty easy to do. Playground, playground fencing. It has been ordered. We got notification this morning, and I reached out in the middle of the meeting to our playground rep that we can start installing playground as early as, they said two weeks. I said mid-May to be safe with some of the delays. The fencing has been ordered based on the, on the resolution we passed at last meeting. It is in aluminum, but a wrought iron look. The aluminum just holds up better to weathering, it's actually less expensive, and it's, and it's a little more durable. So if it gives the look you want of that wrought iron, pretty fencing, it just isn't, it doesn't weather as easily.
And then they could strike long.
So, staff parking, I think, Lisa did leave it. JP, you're going to tell me this one.
Yep, road department.
Road department through the fence. You can walk through the fence and, and it helps out tremendously. We appreciate that. Bill's talking about the potentiality of maybe getting somebody to take some professional pics at some events for twenty-twenty-three to help populate the website and brand the type of venue and event that we're.
Promote twenty-twenty-four.
Yeah, that we're hosting and promote the following year, just so people get a, kind of idea to what the standard is that we're producing.
What about the photography club at the high school?
I, I think we're open to any and all, just so long as it's a professional.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. Hundred percent. We haven't, we haven't landed on specificity of who and where, just the thoughts there to produce a professional looking.
So it's not really necessary, but some places do it. They do it for their.
I think you mentioned mentors and so on.
There are places that do.
Third class act, yeah.
We talked about the acts, the radius, the ideas of the sponsorship and, and promoting quality versus quantity, so I won't, I won't beat a dead horse after we've already gone over a lot of that. The events outside of obviously the concert series or the day programming, or like the Doctoberfest, or the Holiday at the Square, or Seven Two O on the outside of the venue and things of that nature that may be a partner venture, or a partnered venture, that we are taking on all the cost for, or the, or the onus for finding sponsorship for, but would be a, a positive event and, and activity back in, in the amphitheater. and and activity back in in the amphitheater. Staffing needs, we're going to look at the at all angles from safety to parking to in in venue needs, inventory, et cetera, et cetera. So the VIP setup, and as we start identifying those and we start meeting with our teams, we'll, we'll come up with what that looks like as we get into it. The first one or first couple may be all handled that just to get a positive reaction to the venues open. And then as we see what the real need is, we can sort of scale it back to a a definite, but not as heavy crew. Yeah, we'll keep you posted just based on as we, as we experience it, the kind of what's working and what isn't and what's needed. Signage, I know, John, you brought this up. I have a note that we talked about, you know, general rules of the facility, general policies of the facility in usage, directional signage, where and what type of sponsorship signage we'd like to to put up so that, you know, we do it in a dignified way that doesn't take away from the aesthetic of the venue, but obviously promotes the sponsor for their for their investment in in that show or event or season, whatever the case may be. And then, of course, the the parking and ancillary parking signs based on whatever, whatever we're able to to work out with logistics for for that. But they are on our radar. We will continue to to monitor as we go. I I I don't have definite answers for what all that looks like, so I'm just bringing it to your attention that we are, we are discussing. We just haven't come up with what that looks like yet or even the number yet. So if you have, again, these are things that you're chewing on. You say, hey, I was thinking about this. Have you thought of restroom over here, handicapped family, whatever, great, send it our way. Because if if we didn't think about it, we'll certainly put it on the list. Soft opening is is scheduled for the third. I mentioned it, it might even be Ryan Humbert in the shootout, just as a soft, soft launch to test the equipment, test the the stage, whatever comes with that. And and we'll keep you posted as it goes. Fire pit, furniture and picnic tables.
Grant bought the fire pit furniture. I think he stepped down at that time and worked with North Coast Factory Direct. It's the outdoor, it's the Adirondack chairs, but not the ones that go so deep people can't get out of. And it's that material that can sit outside and stuff like.
Doesn't work real nice for the chair for the for the folks who get two and every hated. Well, there's one, there's.
They're asleep?
Yeah, North Coast Factory Direct gave a little bit of a discount, but he he bought those, so we'll just have to get picnic tables.
That's, that's great.
Similar nature, yeah.
Continue partnership there.
Landscaping, I think we talked about keeping the landscaping relatively simple so we can, A, grass to grow and B, viable, not just for this year, but moving forward. I mean, we've, we've talked even so far as to limiting events of the winter because the grass is going to be fragile in its first year. You don't want a lot of.
There won't be grass on the, or events on the grass in the winter.
As I say, this is one of those things, I'm assuming part of the strategy or plan is to have a very aggressive turf growth.
Hydrate cities in particular, we have been told as of this morning that their goal is to get it in as far as the next three weeks go, that deadline, so it has that full time to grow, germinate root, so however you want to work it.
Because you figure May, August is not that, is not that long, especially to get a.
John's talked about that for some a while.
Start talking and trying to have it in by the latter part of May. It gives it two good months if the weather cooperates to keep it becoming hardy. We may have to pay attention to how we water.
Yeah, I would say that we have.
If we get no rain, we're going to have no choices, because otherwise.
Sort of a danger to be pretty wet, but July starts right on anyway, so we're going to keep an eye on it.
We have that tank.
Yeah.
It goes in the back of the dump with the hose. And we watered all those bridges and stuff with.
That'd be awesome. We'll touch base as soon as we see what's going on as you. I think we mentioned, they talked about use of the sound tech at every show to make sure that that it's produced properly.
None of us have that skill. That's, that's something that has to be hard up. We don't. And and the equipment we're talking about, it's different if somebody just needs a mic, but setting up, taking inventory, storing it correctly.
I mean, I don't know if anything can make a country music sound good, but we're going to shop with the sound. I'm just saying that to Scott sitting there.
That's fine. I think I've gotten except topic.
I circle it.
I couldn't resist. I couldn't resist.
We were both at the Tim McGraw concert. He had better seats.
I'm busy. The crosswalk, we had talked about based on what the need was, based on whatever property was able to be secured.
That's going to change. We'll, yeah.
But it's just.
Keep those conversations open. You're absolutely right.
Drinky Fence, John, that was you.
Yeah, we know he's putting the fence up. We just don't know what style, what, you know, I just hope he doesn't just plant a fence there because everybody's going to be staring at it.
That's when we get crazy, John.
So if that happens, we got to figure out what kind of bushes or trees or something we want to.
Geez, right, we can put a nice fence on the other side.
Well, I thought of that also.
Did you?
Not only did I think of that, I also thought, maybe we should approach him if he is and say, we'll split it, but we'll decide what we want to have. Because I I'm.
They could get our hand fence, like with holes in, paint on one.
The sandlot.
Sandlot.
I just.
I rotate. John, you can.
The, the word on the street is that he's sort of put a fence up.
Always for sure put a fence.
Yeah.
See, that was involved with that sewer project.
Yeah.
See, we got the arpers out there.
Yep. So, you know, I, I mean, we may have to throw up a bunch of small pine trees or something. I don't.
That's okay.
They can't be overrated, Peter.
You know what? Zoning.
The shrub or. We're no longer, we're not, for the record, we're no longer talking about fencing of.
Yeah, now we're talking.
We're talking trees. One or the other.
We're a mento tree.
That's it.
So John put this on here, but but Bill had spoken to us, I think it was last week, John, right? The processing credit cards, checks, possibly our our current usage of Stripe for sponsorships to make it easy on on sponsors, giving, giving monies, or some large donations of money.
And then how we set up our accounts and finance, you know, where that goes and do and all of that, however we, whatever we need to do there.
Rob, don't forget, we're charged a percentage off that.
Right.
Yeah, we know. We, we have that built in, S and P on everything.
Same with team sideline, we go to it. And then, John, you have parks, other.
Oh, yeah. So is this officially going to be a park? I think we need to be thinking about.
I think it's a recreational area. It certainly presents a part of like, it's been quite some time, but. And I thought we bounced around potentially how you, how you name.
Name it.
Yeah. Centennial Park.
Oh, absolutely.
What, whatever.
I'm just thinking in terms of creating the perception that it is a park.
Yeah, with the door.
Yeah.
I mean, it has, that's the, that's the only issue is, but it's a separate type of, because there is a playground, there's the restroom that's going to be open. There's day programming, so is it a park or is it a recreational area?
And technically, we, we could have alcohol in any of the parks with a proper permit, in fact, fenced area. So the technicality could technically do it.
Plus, I mean, we are going to have a lot of parlaying employees spending a lot of time there.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
Yeah, because that's.
What's that?
WWF, yeah, worldwide wrestling.
Thursdays in fall.
Yeah, the park is maintaining it, but and at events, it's all hands on deck. This can't be parked all the time.
Jackson Tree, there's a park, parks naturally.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, if we don't classify it as a park, what else would we realistically need?
If you want my opinion, if it's got a playground and a restroom that's open and an open gathering space and gazebo's, which are essentially the the shade structures, it 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 takes on the qualities of a park.
Well, I mean, you figure there are going to be people that are going to use it for that on days that there's nothing going on. Everybody coming up here, they're going to have kids with them, they're going to go over.
We're having perk programming there that used to be in our parks with the Y and.
Come on, that could be the Silver Sneakers.
Silver Sneakers is going to move out there and, you know, the Parkinson's class, we're going to have kids, you know. We just need a, a name of the.
I'm just looking at the Youngstown.
Yeah.
Now we're getting to it.
Everybody's going to call it the Oakwood Amphitheater. Plain Township Amphitheater in Oakwood. Not that we have to name it that, but that until it has a name, that's what they're going to call it until it has a name. The sooner you name it, then the, then it's better. Right, the sooner you name it, that the more people will be out of that at Oakwood Square.
But we need to be out of the gates.
Yes.
We can't allow, because.
Yeah, you want to always have a name.
Yeah.
Because then it's stuck.
You can.
Dream park or sign.
Yeah.
Now you're an exec.
Yeah, for a million.
I mean, honestly, if a, if a business come along and said, hey, I'll pay you, I'll pay you $250,000 for naming rights for five years or 10 years, that's absolutely a for sale consideration.
And that happened to Jackson after the fact. Because, you know, it wasn't your park and and now it's, you know, then that's.
That's three shows and you don't have to blink an eye.
But it would be nice for the website to have the name of the park.
So is it, but so then it's the Plain Township Amphitheater, a community park, a Centennial Park, it. Plain Township Amphitheater, Historic Oakwood Park.
The Yoke. Yeah.
The Yoke.
Well, I think, I think what helps us do is looks like it does allow us to brand it early and often, you know.
But it's got to happen soon.
I agree, but we can come up with that name and whatever that is, the venue now becomes whatever that name is. And now it's branded through the get go and we're controlling the messaging.
Would you want to do a work session with brainstorming of names? Would that help?
Let's do some email searches first, because I know we've shared, shared emails.
Everybody has sent names.
I think I actually have some of those already. I can search, yeah.
All right.
Let's do that. That's at least a foundational starting point. We can do a work session where we go, hey, here's our top three or five, the rest of these are out for whatever reason.
And I'm, I'm almost positive.
Initially, it's off without the name, because I don't want to get it up there, we do too.
I'm sure between us, we can search and find, so I'm sure we have some. Yeah, that's not a problem. And then the last thing John mentioned, which is a great idea, is is producing a parking map. So once we know what that looks like or ancillary parking is, it helps streamline some of that conversation and the expectation.
On the website?
On the website, yeah.
Yeah, and Nixel on the website would be good.
Right.
You talked about that.
Yeah, Nixel, we mentioned that. So I think with the amphitheater, I was trying to cover the programming, which is 1, 2, A and B.
Why don't you present resolutions?
That's where I'm at right now.
All right.
So 3A would be to adopt or accept, excuse me, I said that wrong, to accept the 2023 Amphitheater Budget Production as attached, which is what we kind of glossed over in the beginning. A soft launch, couple of day programs and a couple of shows to get us into.
I'm going to move on Amphitheater 3A Budget Protection.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Role call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
And then 2024 would be 3B, and I know we talked about as opposed to the weekly, twice, you know, accept the buzzet maybe as proposed with two concerts a month as opposed to four.
Also move on 3B, 3B Amphitheater 2024.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded in discussion. We can always add or if we have to. It's easier to do it that way than it is to try to play catch and.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, it's a projection.
Yeah, any, anything else? Role calls.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Thanks. Then number four would be the amphitheater website, which we've delved into here.
We'll get it technically submersion and then get it to discussion.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded in discussion.
Are you comfortable with the general layout and contents of?
Yes, thank you.
Anything else? Role call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
And then the final, you'll see attached are the amphitheater black and white logos.
I will move on Amphitheater.
Second for discussion, discussion.
So do they just, you need to decide and then circle it to give.
I'll circle it. I'll circle it and then we'll say out left, which one pops?
Honestly, to me, depending upon the color backdrop, you should choose, there should be two, there should be two. Just white on dark colors versus black on dark, dark colors.
I think what he's.
As long as it's the same exact design, yeah.
He's giving you the right one, what it would look like with either a black or a white design. It's the same thing at the top and the bottom.
Yeah.
Well, do we know the color assurance or is, is it?
I see that as something they could have.
I think he's just showing you the general design of a two color design.
Yeah, I think he's just wanting more so, which one do you want to go on most of the.
And you use the dark, dirty light.
Paperwork slash, yeah.
Oh, paperwork too.
Yeah.
So really it's left or right, it would just be depending upon what the.
No, because they're, they're color combinations.
Oh, okay. So there's a side from right side or left side?
Correct.
I'm going to break the stalemate at least for discussion. I'll say the left side.
Well, I, I personally like the left side. I like the darker stuff on white paper because I think that pops. I think that dark on white paper jumps out. See, there's one, there's one the white would look like on a dark banner.
I just feel the lines are a little more.
I think they pop out.
Accentuated, yeah.
This one doesn't look like an amphitheater to me. It's that like a white one, you know what I mean? Shake that to the side. And chances are, the shirts will be bright colors because you want people to see it in the audience, like the safety yellow, safety green.
Safety orange.
Safety orange.
Blue, yeah.
I think at that point, we pretty much just, if we decide on both of those, it's just dependent on.
It's, it's, yeah, that's why they, they basically look at the layout with a two color because it'll depend on the color of whatever you're putting it on is which one you're using.
All right, so is the consensus left side? Anything else? Role call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes, I will communicate that out.
That's all I have, thank you.
Since we are sticking to the specific agenda to the special meeting, I will make a motion to adjourn the special meeting at 5:47.
Second.
It moved and seconded in discussion, role call.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Thanks, Rob.
Kudos.